Call the meeting to order for Public Utility District Number One of Skagit County Commissioners Meeting on January tenth, two thousand and twenty-three at four thirty P M. We'll go ahead and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with equal civil with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody.
As most of you know, the first meeting of every year, we have an election of officers and our protocol is to have the Vice President reside at the first meeting and to take nominations for President, Vice President and Secretary. And in probably what must be close to the fastest promotion of all time. Ms. Hamburg has inherited her spot as Vice President from her predecessor, and so will assume the role of President for that purpose today, just to take the nominations in the election. And then my presumption would be that Joe would take over, but that just explains the protocol for the day. If you have any questions? Anybody? No?
I would say that she earned said promotion by being sworn in twice in two weeks.
That's also true. And by virtue of an election she won, that helps too. All right. Thank you. Let me know if I have any. Do you have any question?
Yeah, what is the traditional rotation that I mean?
Well, just from President back down to Secretary and then back up. If the all other things equal, if each, if there's no new members, then we just rotate. So that the Secretary moves up to Vice President and then the Vice President moves up to President. President then goes gets demoted down to Secretary. So everybody gets a bite at the apple sometimes. And this is not set in stone. We can do as appropriate and as we choose. You are the Commission. You get to do what you want. So the last time we had a changeover, I believe we had Joe retain his position, or maybe it's this time that he's retaining his position as President. And so we don't, we're not bound by that rotation. We do what's appropriate and necessary. Okay.
The typical pattern after an election has been the newly elected Commissioner would serve as Secretary. And then the one that aspired to that would serve as Vice.
That's right.
And the most senior Commissioner would serve as President, right? The kind of the pattern.
That's the pattern that we have adhered to so far. And if it ain't broke, don't fix it, I guess.
Presidents.
Right. Thank you.
So then do you need a motion?
I motion that Joe would serve as President.
Second.
Just because they couldn't do it any faster.
Yep.
So all in favor?
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
So at this time, I would then make a motion to nominate Andrew then as Vice President.
My second.
Motion is second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Then I would move that Commissioner Hamburg, our newest newest by virtue of minutes and second twice. And so glad to have you here, be our new Secretary.
Second. Bye.
All right. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. We've elected officers. So then we want to discuss committees. So WAPUDA.
Yeah, I have. It was weird when I so for the last, since I started two years really, and then being interrupted by COVID. So this last year has been really the own the first year of impact. I I've enjoyed it. I would like to continue on the WAPUDA side. What I found that was really useful on this, and I think it goes across all of our assignments for that is just to have that be backstopped because there are meetings that are, you know, the April meeting or, you know, whatever it is that that is useful. I I've found a lot of use so far with with WAPUDA, but I also was like, I I've yet to be in a meeting that I don't think that, you know, my initial two years that as a new Commission would be great. And so it would be not exclusive, I guess, is the way that I would put that. And so where we have assignments, but there's not a measure of exclusivity. And but I know not all Commissions can operate like that, but I do feel like that in our aspiration to be a high performing Commission that we have. There's if we don't have designated backstops, we also appreciate being backstopped by the other Commissioners in these other assignments.
So do we need to vote on these or?
It's assigned.
Okay, so we'll appoint Andrew to the WAPUDA with the idea that if she can't make a meeting, he'll let us know and we'll try to fill in where we can.
I'm happy to serve in the insurance group for the first year. I will be attending WAPUDA for the new Commissioner training and be able to fill in as backstop as necessary. But I'm happy to fill the insurance role.
Great.
And then Joe, you've been in that. Is there any measure of like?
Hopefully they maybe have a meeting. I, yeah, so I guess just make sure that they have but I think I had one in two years on a conference call, so.
And would you accept the appointment on the SCOG board?
I can do SCOG. I just have to make sure I know when the first meeting is because last time I got nominated as Vice Chair for not being at your wedding.
You're either at the table or you're on the menu.
You've been appointed in a position.
All right, so that takes care of that.
We'll make sure we notify the appropriate agencies. Let them know what the new members are.
Sounds good. Disclosure of conflicts of interest.
This is the.
Pete, you wanna?
Do we have?
You wanna?
With the paperwork before on this or? This is just the public disclosure and paperwork that we already.
Right. I'm not aware of any conflicts either one of you to have, and you don't have much of a conflict with the, we've already done the analysis on whether your offices are incompatible. The job you have during the day and this job, the only issue, and that's why I wrote you a memo, was so that you could make it clear that you're going to avoid any appearance of a conflict of interest in the dual roles. Our private prior Commissioner. Every time this came up would disclose, for instance, that he had a ownership interest in one of the banks that we've used. That's a very distant conflict. But unless there is something that you do from in your day to day life that would bring the confidences that you're exposed to as a Commission here into question, then you don't really have a conflict. So this is the time, if there is a conflict in your personal life or in your professional life, you just announce it here so that for the world to know and the rest of us, so that we have it on the books. If you don't have a conflict, you just simply say, I am not aware of any conflicts with my job. Okay.
Well, as you guys know, I hold a job title of wastewater treatment laboratory supervisor for the City of Anacortes. And after consultation with legal counsel, concluded that my role of P U D Commissioner will not be incompatible with my primary employment at the City of Anacortes. I do not foresee any encountering any actual or direct conflicts of interest with my dual roles, but I intend to remain vigilant and avoid not only actual conflicts, but also the appearance appearance of any conflicts of interest. Therefore, I intend I intend to recuse myself in any instance where my P U D role has any connection or entanglement with my duties with the City of Anacortes.
And I am unaware of any
Yeah, I would echo those comments too. I'm unaware of any conflicts of interest for myself. So with that, we will move on to the consent agenda. It looks like we have five items out there. Is there a motion to approve the consent?
I'm going to be permit consent agenda.
My second.
Motion is second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Consent agenda is been approved. With that, audience comments. So hearing the audience tonight wishing offered comments, please step to the podium. You're on Zoom. Use the raise your hand function to let us know. Seeing none, we will move on to the managers' reports.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. Good afternoon, everyone.
Good.
Little bit of a recap of things that have happened since our last meeting. We only had one meeting in December. But we did have a training date on December twenty-third, so thank you to the Commissioners for attending. I think it was a really good event. We had lots of participation with our speaker. And it was good to have everybody together again in the same room. I think there was a lot of appreciation for that. And I think most of the good feedback we got were on the breakfast burritos. And I think everybody loved those. So thanks to Shannon for organizing that. People love that and it's going to be hard to get rid of that now for every training day. So it's a high bar we have. Just before the end of the year, I sent an email out just the other day acknowledging this, but just before the end of the year, we received confirmation that we are recipients of a $2 million grant from Congressman Larson's office for the appropriations and it's for the Alger water line relocation from the Fish Passage lawsuit. So that's in addition to the two hundred and fifty thousand we're getting from the state legislature. So it's 2.25 million dollars. That's great for us. It's grant money. It'll help us complete that project up in Alger. And I just want to acknowledge Kevin's work in getting that done. Kevin deserves a lot of credit for reaching out to our legislators and setting up the tours of our treatment plant and our projects. You know, you gotta, you gotta bring them to you to understand what we do. And I think after they saw everything that we did, you know, they recognized the good work that we do and they want to help support us and help us be successful. So the partnerships that Kevin helped create are great for us. And it just it it helps because it it reinforces the reason for doing those tours. And so thanks to the Commissioners for coming to the tours and, you know, supporting us in those endeavors, but I think this is great. New session starting this week and we're planning on making more requests specifically around relocations because of the culvert projects. And I've got feedback that I think the legislators are interested in helping us, so I'm expecting some more. Piggybacking on that a little bit, there was a local legislator send off at the Burlington Council Chambers last week. Commissioner Linkus and I attended, and so it was good to see some local legislators before they went off to Olympia. There are meetings in Olympia this week for WAPUDA. So I will be down there tomorrow is a new Commissioner orientation, so I know Commissioner Hamburg is going to be there. I'm going to attend as well. And then there's a legislative reception tomorrow night starts at six, I think, in the ledge building. So if you can make it, that's great. If you can't, that's also fine. We're going to have representation. And then there are meetings on Thursday, the different committee meetings. Speaking of meetings, I have a meeting set up next week with the Mount Vernon School District Superintendent and the City of Mount Vernon Mayor. We're going to talk about the playfields in our existing building. So I'll share with you more at the next meeting after I learn more about. We're making progress on being able to move our new building forward. Reminder that we're going to be holding work sessions later this month for our own Commissioner orientation. So next Tuesday, the seventeenth. And then on the twenty-fourth as well, we meet at four P M both of those days. And department managers are gonna each provide more information about their departments, their staff and their workload. You should have that on all your calendars, I think.
So I think you said the twenty-fourth.
Twenty-first.
Yeah, twenty-fourth is a regular.
Yeah, thirty-first. That's what I meant. Couple of things from departments hiring. We always were continually talking about hiring. We did have a couple of internal promotions movements. Kathy DeSalis is moving from billing clerk up to our general ledger accountant. That happened. It was announced before the end of the year. It's just starting to take place now. And we recently hired a meter technician from with from our maintenance department. So Jared, who'd been in the maintenance department for a month and a meter tech position came open, applied for that, so we're going to hire him in that position. So more internal movement. We're also making an offer for a new water treatment plan operator too to to fill out the staffing up there. But the internal movement creates new positions, so we still have positions.
Internal?
Treatment plan operator?
Yeah.
No, it's going to be an exception. We're currently reviewing applicants for a maintenance superintendent, G I S asset analyst, and then a billing clerk to replace Kathy down in the customer service department. Yeah, so those are my updates unless there's any questions.
Any questions?
No, I intend on I'll get some tomorrow morning. I'm going with a group of the folks to the Seattle City Council to discuss their approach to the to the dam. And then I'll scoot down to Olympia just as fast as traffic will allow to join in on the.
Oh, you're gonna be okay.
And then to attend the afternoon and then the water conference.
On Thursday.
Thursday.
Okay.
So I'll be down there. But yeah, hopefully have good news on the trying to get the City of Seattle's attention as to their responsibilities or or lack of attention to their the FERC relicensing and so.
So just following up on that, there's that email that I got. Where is it? The Dyke District and.
Yeah, I feel like we. Right, I know, and I feel like I've talked to both Jenna and and Will on, and so I would definitely, I would love to hear that.
Okay. So they're asking to come in and do our presentation?
Right, yes. Yeah, I think that'd be great.
Okay. I'll I'll reach back out, see how long that presentation is. Because if it's, if it is lengthy, then like Commissioner Linkus said, maybe we have a separate work session for that. If it's not too long, maybe we've been incorporating through the meeting. I'll find out how long it's going to be. All right.
All right, so at this time, Mike Buck's operation.
Lot of things that we still obviously are going to yet to cover, but this would be a little bit of a recap of what we've already been talking about to get her up to speed. So starting with the water treatment plant, we had some crack repairs done. There's some superficial cracking on the top of the filter bay walls and the flock basins and also on some of the outside structures of the walls. Nothing that happened suddenly, but we discovered that there was some cracking on there. We decided to address it, so. We had a company come up last week, the last couple of weeks, and they basically just ground out the cracks. We're more concerned if it was down, getting down deep into the slabs or not, if it was just superficial. It appears to me it was mostly superficial, so they were able to inject an epoxy in there that basically goes down and coats the rebar and then seals it with an epoxy layer on top, and then they put a mastic over the top of that. And then there's also some settling on the flock basins that we are also monitoring, which should be coming up here in a second. So just in reference, a lot of the cracking I knew that was going to happen, trying to push two buttons at the same time. Why are we going forward, not backward here? Oh, my gosh. Back, 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 back. There we go. Back to the laser. On top of the filter base here is mostly where the cracking is, and then where the flock bases start. There's some seams where this portion was added on. That's also cracking and separating. There was a chunk right here that was kind of busted off, and then down here, there's actually like a dipping in the settling of the basins that are starting to pull away from the building a little bit or from the filter bays, I should say. So that's one of the spots that was spalled on the outside where the flock basins and the and the filter bays meet. And it had a bunch of exposed rebar. And again, we were concerned that some of that corrosion was getting deeper into the slab. Didn't appear that that was the case. The contractors came up and cleaned it and prepped the rebar and basically just recoded it and fixed it up. So it's it's good there. The one over here is the gap where this you can see a bar right there that those that bars should not be visible. And the gap's a little bit smaller than at the bottom than is at the top, so the flock bases are basically look like they're kind of tipping away from the filter bay area. And then these were just the cracking on top of the of the walls and so forth that we were fixing. So that gauge was put on there and it was centered. How long ago, Kurt? Was that gauge put on a month ago, month and a half? So it's gone from dead center to there in a month and a half. So it's still moving, not rapidly, but it's moving.
How much is that, Mike?
Centimeter?
Yeah.
Mark? Millimeter? That's what I meant.
And we, we have, we put another gauge on just to make sure. Let that.
Oh, a secondary one? Okay. So yeah, this is just monitoring how much it's settling. Still keeping an eye on it. And there's what the repairs look like on the surface areas after the fact, after you've been epoxied and then Cika flex on top and there's some sand on top of that, just to kind of bind it together. So basically surface sealing all the cracks that were on top now to keep any more water from getting down in there and making it worse. The chlorine scrubber, the fiberglass pipe showed up finally that goes between the scrubber, the backside of the scrubber box back here around the corner to the backside of the building where the original wet scrubber was and the ductwork. The pipe showed up. It's got a little crack in it, but it's easily repairable. It's not going to slow things down. Our our contractor that does the programming has most of that stuff done. Casey's done the wiring. So we're pretty much ninety percent on that. We just got to get everybody back together and get everything up and going. There's a separate project that is the a moan, there's the crack in the fiberglass pipe, which is just going to be grinded out, fix it and put it back together. There's a couple more projects going on. There's ammonia alarming and there's ammonia and chlorine sensors are going to go down in the filter base and down the bottom two or three layers of the treatment plant to warn the operators there's any leakage of any kind of gases or ammonias. That's another project that's going along with it. That's also needs some more wiring pulled and more programming done. But that's separate from the scrubber job. The scrubber job should be wrapped up here in a couple of weeks, we hope. And the gutters. That's going to start tomorrow, finally. Been waiting for that for two and a half years. Finally getting materials. They're supposed to finally show up on the job site tomorrow and start working on those. The meter department, the endpoints still continue to see battery endpoints failing. There's two hundred of them failed now. We were waiting and didn't know when the latest supplies were going to come. Last week, we finally got a shipment of two hundred meters. So the plan is to probably go out and replace a hundred of those with meters and everything and not rob the endpoints. Badger said there's some little chingus that goes in the meter head they're waiting for from their manufacturer to start getting the new heads built. But they also now have a new chip supplier and they're promising now that they're the replacement should start ramping up and come a little sooner. And we have thirty large meters that need replaced. And then thirty, the thirty-one disconnects at Christmas time was was mainly freezes and flooded houses and stuff like that. The flushing crew, the distribution portion has been, they flush twenty or twenty to thirty dead ends every three months. We just have a routine list of some dead ends where the chlorine residual falls off and we have problems with pH and residual. So they have that along with the routine flushing that they do. And grand total last year, they used over a little over fifteen million gallons, just flushing the unidirectional flushing of the system and the dead ends and so forth. Also a combination of tie-ins, the routine flushing and the water quality requests, all those different things in combination equate to that amount. They track every month how many gallons estimations that they're when they're flushing. And each one of our remote systems, including Judy, we should have completely flushed on a seven year cycle, not Judy, but like the remote systems and portions of Judy, I should say, because we can't get all of Judy done even in one year. And the leak detection is done mostly just as needed right now. The flushing crew has, I'll get more into it in the next week's thing about the what we use for leak detection and so forth. But we have devices that they can set out. We have eight or ten of them that go out in valve cans. And you can monitor a area. What they would do is they'd flush that that zone, make sure all the valves are good. Put the sensors out, go continue flushing. Then you got to come back and pick up the sensors. You got to go through the data. It's kind of a labor intensive thing to do all of that. We did quite a bit of it for the first year or so, but and didn't really come up with any any leaks like like system leaks. So most of our leak detection right now is either by listening for known leaks or correlating distances and things like that. So we'll talk more about that next week. During the cold weather, we had a lot of issues with freezing and some communication issues. We have a system up on Cascade Ridge as a series of four sites and three reservoirs that run off of three different DSL circuits, and we have come to find out lately through Ben's hard work and everybody else in I T determining that we're kind of like at the end of a garden hose and the top of Cascade Ridge is just getting a drop on the DSL. So we've had some communication failures between reservoirs. And we had some spilling and some lack of water, and the guys have basically been have to do a lot of of running it by hand basically and checking it physically, trying to get some of these things ironed out. And we're, we're getting better. We're getting some better things done through the consultant. We had a couple of changes done in the PLCs and we're still working with the supplier and Ben's done didn't work on the firewalls and it's six or eight different things trying to come together to make it better. And the I T has been very, very helpful and critical in all this. Two new projects ready to start up. The panel just got delivered today. Actually, for Rockport, we're changing the entire skater panel out. That's pushing twenty-five years old. Updating all the hardware up there, starting to plan for a new R O plant this year. There's money in the budget this year and next year both to replace the R O plant on Guiness. We're going to hand that off to Mark Sem. He doesn't know it yet.
Still want to take a field trip.
Anytime. There's guys go out there every week. The P R V program through distribution, they did all fourteen sites that they had scheduled. And most of the sites have at least two or three PRVs in them, so it's a, it's a pretty much a full day every time they go out there. And there again, we have a hundred and fifty some PRVs, so we're trying to get all of them done on a like a seven year rotation, trying to get all of them rebuilt and redone. That one happens to be the one on the hole at Nathan Island. Any questions so far? Okay. Last week, we discovered that there was a leak in the eighteen inch supply line from Gilligan. Just a little bit of water coming up through the top of the road, but I think most of it was just disappearing into the roadbed and maybe going out the bank, but it was discovered and they shut it off and dug it up. None of the joints are restrained. This was all put in in the eighties, I believe, and it's just ductile iron. Bell and spigot, no, no field log gaskets, none of that. So they found one leak at one of the joints. And there was a creek crossing right here that was done several years ago that the guys went underneath the line, put a new culvert in, re-rocked it and all that. And I think the leak was in that joint up there and there's a elbow, I think, right here. And there was a block up here on this elbow up here, but they went there last week, dug it all out, put it back together. On top of that, they've been doing some brush removal up at Janiki Creek along the Gabian Baskets. Been doing some large meter replacements, getting ready to do the hydrant program, starting up a cedar woolly and Mount Vernon's quarterly ones again here soon. So there's one of the leaks. They ended up finding three joints were pulled out. But luckily they were able to dig out alongside of it and so caddywampus there. They're able to dig out alongside it, push it back together. Kudos to Ed and Jared and Cody and Alex. They spent a couple of days up there and dug out alongside it, basically realigned it, pull it all back together. Didn't have to put new gaskets in there, but all back together, turn it back on. Worked out. Pretty fortunate that so we can keep water from, keep taking water from Gilligan. But we got some more studying to do up there. I think Mark and Mark both went up there and looked at it and we got some more thinking to do on a long term solution. We got some more thinking to do on a long-term solution. Just the one from, well, the other one from Gilligan. The main intake. And they come down to a collector box down below too, but yeah, that's the eighteen-inch line that runs from Gilligan Creek. And then here along the. Backside of B Dam, there's the Gabian Baskets and Janiki Creek that bypasses the reservoir. This has been all grown up with trees and brush and stuff along the sides of the. Stream that's supposed to be kept unobstructed and stream path. Clear and all that, so we've gone up there and been doing some. Clearing along there. Getting that tidied up and then the dam. The dam drain and the overflow all go out in here into this ravine right here, so it's essential to keep that kinda clear and visible and. Able to be maintained there as well. So the hydrant maintenance is starting up again here soon. They're outfitting one of the trucks to do the. First of them, I mean, years that broke up over Mount Vernon, do like a quarter of over four years, I think, five years. And then we just added the cedar woolly. Um fire hydrers to the contractor them as well. You start that program here real soon. Then some of the projects coming up, that's the top of Clearwell number three that needs to be repainted. A potential seismic retrofit on the Clearwell that Jay was working on. Mentioned the two distribution skater projects, um I T is working on installing wind nine-one alarming at the treatment plant. Uh some lab software. Security system needs to go into the raw water pump station, still yet to be installed, cameras and card swipes and so forth. As I mentioned before, the ammonia and the chlorine alarming still needs to be finished up and uh we're doing like a full skater replacement in the next year or two. Of hardware at the treatment plant. And again, the uh R O plant coming up as well. Not much change on the fleet, still waiting for a service truck after two years. Supposed to be built next month, ordered it two years ago. We'll wait and see if that happens. And uh two trucks we did order last year, we finally got and one is yet to still get on the road eleven months after we ordered them or almost a year. Hard to get. So during the snowstorm on training day. Um I don't know, some of you guys may have noticed some of the crew going in and out here. We started getting breaks and leaks. From the thaw on training day when it got warm and rainy. Um treatment plant went into high production that Friday and Saturday both where they were. Almost maximum flows, where they're having a hard time eating contact time, cause this time of year where the water's so cold. You can't flow as much and the chlorine contact time is more critical. And they thought we had a leak on the transmission line or a break somewhere and it's just like. No, once things start thawing out and people start getting water again, it's just the consumption goes up a lot when. After a freeze, people start running a lot of water plus a combination of breaks. And again, we had some reservoir comm fails um from storm damage, trees down up river, um Cascade Ridge. Lots of different things going on. Uh we had a line break in the. Ceiling of the treatment plant which fed the tepid water stations that. Keep the guys safe if they have chemical exposure. They went and fixed that that day in that afternoon, right after the safety meeting or the training day. And the uh. In charge guys were out. All all weekend, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. All through the weekend, almost non-stop. One of the instances that happened um. Well, the water treatment plant made one in hand. One of those days the treatment plant went down, all the skating communications went down and Todd basically had run that plant in. H O A mode, you know what that's like when there's no skate, there's no trending, no. No, yeah, no, no feedback from your instruments, none of that kinda stuff. Basically ran in hand there for about a day. We had. Two people in charge, where the in charge guy for maintenance and there's a guy in charge for skater and distribution. The guy that was in charge for the maintenance went to the Cook Road. Gas station, the Pacific Pride, got fuel. Got about as far as Janiki Fields and broke down. He suspected fuel, called a tow truck. Got the got the truck called in, swapped rigs and all that. He was going back out for another leak. Went by the same fuel station, saw the distribution guy getting fuel there. Said, I hope you didn't just gas up your truck. I think I had bad fuel in the in-charge rig. He did, he got about as far as the line road, he broke down. So Friday night, when all this stuff was going on, we had two trucks towed into the yard and had to swap trucks and. Take him to the Ford dealership and get fixed and yeah, it was quite a weekend that that weekend, lots of different things going on. People with two feet of water in their house and drywall hanging from their ceilings and I mean, the phone was just non-stop, I think, for Ron. He worked like forty hours that weekend, I think. Pretty non-stop. That's it for me for now. If there's any questions.
Little bit. Definitely, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mike. Alright, so on to new business and. This is a project acceptance for. Lightline Road at the Port of Skagit.
Yeah, so um this one's a little bit unusual. Uh this is a developer project. There's actually. Two, three developer projects in this area. Two of the project are contingent on. Two of the projects getting water are contingent upon this project being accepted. They have had a hard time completing their project closeout requirements uh due to these. They need a surveyor and they need to get a a detailed survey done for the easement. They haven't been able to uh quite complete that. We've worked with the port so that they give us a more. I'm just gonna say onerous uh easement. It's a larger easement than we would typically get. It's centered on the pipe, so the description isn't very good, um and it's not very detailed, so. Um that lets us approve the project, accept the project and turn on the water to these other other projects downstream. So we're trying to keep this moving and allowing them to to move forward with their project. The reason we have it here is because eventually you were gonna, hopefully, we're going to bring. Get the new easement to replace this easement and you'll be relinquishing this temporary permanent easement. So we're just looking for a project acceptance.
So looking for a motion. For project acceptance.
Why move if you accept the flight line road or Skagit project?
I second.
Promotion a second on favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Road Pipeline Replacement Project Recommendation to Award a Bid.
Yeah, so this is the uh first construction project of the year. We've had this uh Skyridge. Project has been on the books for a number of years and and finally it's come to the. Top of our priority list and um we've been hard, working hard to get these. Plans out and and off to bid. Um we had. A really good bidding climate and we got really good numbers, so we're we're pleased with this project. Um and especially the timing to um. Once we get this, this project is intended to shore up the water lines in the Skyridge area. We have some four-inch A C there. And they really present a risk if they fail on that slope. Uh to doing, you know, residential property damage. But two, we're gonna have, we're gonna replace it with an eight-inch ductile iron pipe and which um. Enables us or moves us one step closer to uh taking the Skyridge tank out of service and getting that squared up. So. This is a important project for us. The. We've kind of uh just based on material supplies. Uh and supply chains, et cetera, availability of materials. We've opened this up for the contractor to um start uh sometime around March. Normally, we don't do that, but um we wanna be flexible to uh to meet their needs. And not have this impact our inspection needs for the next project that we we have coming, so we're looking at. Sometime around March, hopefully we'll be starting.
So we'd be looking for a motion to. Award the bid to S R V Construction, the amount of nine hundred eighty-two thousand five hundred and three dollars and sixty-one cents.
My motion to award the Little Mountain uh Skyridge Road Pipeline Replacement to S R V Construction. For nine hundred eighty-two thousand five hundred and three dollars and sixty-one cents.
Motion a second on favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed. Alright, that passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um so at this time, there are three informational items in there, usual. Stuff. Any commissioner comments to see this?
None for me.
Thought the training day was a great experience. I really appreciated the camaraderie and our speaker was very. Very good. I enjoyed. Enjoyed the seeing you guys work together as a staff and not only work, but enjoy each other's company and. Look forward to. Many meetings to come.
Grant won't always be the emcee.
Alright, well, with that, we will adjourn at five eleven P M.